We're thankful for you. Premier Heating and Air is thankful for you and now offering a $2,000 rebate on a new system, plus a $2,000 tax credit on qualifying systems. Call Premier Heating and Air today or log on to premierishere.com and experience a premier difference today. No service call fees with repairs. For a 99 cent Premier Club membership has awesome perks, including no service call fee with repairs. Get details today from Premier Heating and Air, a locally owned and operated company.
This November 20th, 2025 meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called to order. Please stand for the invocation delivered by Councilman Sarah Colby. Please remain standing after the invocation for the pledge to the flag.
Our God would just come to you today, just so grateful for a new day and a new opportunity to serve you. Will we thank you for the opportunity to serve our city and for the employees that so faithfully serve as well? Will we ask you to give us wisdom as we make decisions? And thank you for a safe day in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to this meeting of the Dublin City Council. Apologize for starting a little bit later. We had a lot of items to go through in pre-council, but we're ready to move forward with our council meeting now. We have with us, in addition to the council members that you see here, Councilman Brown, Godfrey, Colby, and Griggs. We also have on the telephone with us, participating remotely from, I believe, the National League of Cities meeting. We have Councilman Chris Smith and Councilman Benny Jones. So we do have a quorum and are able to conduct business today. We're going to begin our meeting with a special presentation. I believe that we have Daniel Gaddis with us from the Department of Community Affairs. Mr. Gaddis, if you'd like to come forward for a special presentation.
Good afternoon, it's good to be with you all.
Good afternoon.
Yeah. We actually, DCA was here in January. We were here for a community planning institute that your city so graciously hosted us at. We were at the Carnegie Library, as well as the Dublin Theater, and had a great time. We did a walking tour, and I think a lot of government officials, city and county staff, elected officials and planning commissioners around the state really enjoyed our time here in your beautiful city. And so I want to thank you again for that opportunity earlier this year. But I'm here for a different reason today. Today brings me great pleasure to come here to you all, on behalf of the community affairs, Department of Community Affairs and Christopher Nunn, to award you congratulations as being recognized as a Plan First City for the fourth time, which is a record. There are only four other communities in the state to achieve this feat four times. This application period was particularly competitive as we received 22 applications and over 50 local governments around the state checked their eligibility. And this Plan First designation, as you might be well aware by this point, will last for three years. And it starts January 1st, 2026, lasts for three years. This designation recognizes the hard work of local governments in successful comprehensive plan implementation and acknowledges your community's commitment to identifying opportunities and setting goals to move your community forward. Since the Plan First Program's inception in 2015, the Department of Community Affairs established a way of highlighting exemplary communities' work on specifically the comprehensive plan and effectively engaging their public. For those that are in the room that may not know, a comprehensive plan is a guiding, long-range document that communities use to ensure that future development will occur where, when, and how the community desires. Besides simply celebrating the Plan First community through press releases, certificates, and statewide recognition, all of which are happening, the Department of Community Affairs also provides financial incentives for communities in the form of, and this is just a handful of incentives, there are more than this, a reduced interest rate on certain Georgia Environmental Financing Authority loans, Jifa for short. This benefit has helped some Plan First communities save over $300,000 on water and sewer loans in the past, and I believe you guys have actually enjoyed that incentive as well in the past. Also, access to three bonus points on CHIP applications. CHIP is an acronym meaning Community Home Investment Program. It's a federally funded program that provides funds to city governments, public housing authorities, and nonprofits to rehabilitate owner-occupied homes and to build and renovate affordable, single-family homes for sale to eligible homebuyers. Now Dublin can enjoy three bonus points on CHIP applications. Additionally, three bonus points on our incredibly competitive Lytech Housing Tax Credit Project, as long as your local government goes through something called a revitalization plan, which sounds scary, but it's not. Additionally, and this is another benefit that your city has taken advantage of over and again, is now you have annual access to CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. If you're not a Plan First community, you have to, if you want to apply for CDBG funds from DCA, you have to wait every other year. You do it every other year. With this designation, you now can apply every single year, something again that you all have done very well. The application to become a Plan First community is stringent, and the reviewers hold these communities to a very high standard. All applications are reviewed by an internal DCA team, but are also reviewed by other Plan First communities around the state, as well as other state agencies besides DCA. Organizations like University of Georgia Carl Vinson Institute of Government, the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, Georgia Department of Transportation, ACCG, and GMA all score these applications. The Plan First application assesses a community through four overarching categories: goals, leadership, participation, and implementation. One reviewer wrote about the city of Dublin, "Overall, this applicant demonstrates a high-performing planning process marked by clarity, creativity, and accountability, serving as a strong model for peer communities. The preparer did a great job in laying out the projects and discussing how they relate back to their comprehensive plan." In the goals section, one reviewer commented, "Thirteen-and-a-half-mile multimodal and streetscape improvement project which will result in the construction of the Oconee River Trail." Wow. Budgeted for, you also budgeted for a significant update or overhaul of your existing zoning code. Dublin aggressively and proactively addresses blighted properties through the blight tax, free Wi-Fi in Stubbs Park, the Oconee Gym, and the farmer's market, provided excellent goals with lots of progress on each. On the topic of leadership, several shiny examples were provided about your leadership driving robust partnerships. And these comments include, clearly, the goals were heavily helped by the amount of robust partnerships. Market on Madison, the weekly farmer's market, first Friday concerts, 20,000-plus visitors each year. The Land Bank Authority providing leadership in helping renovate housing, redevelopment of several properties, more and more on the way. Moving forward on the preservation of Oconee High School Gym, historical black high school in Dublin. And then the applicant provided great amounts of letters of support from partners in your community. And we already alluded to this, but in terms of capturing incentives from the Plan First Program, it's been evident that Dublin has had a hard-working mentality when it comes to capturing and administering state and federal funds to put your comprehensive plan to work. Since 2015, including Jifa Water and Sewer Loans, Dublin has been awarded $12.5 million in CDBG and Jifa loans alone. That's $12.5 million directly boosted by your Plan First designation. In closing, the Department of Community Affairs is thrilled to convey this Plan First designation here today to the city of Dublin. The public, staff, and leadership of this community have shown outstanding commitment to a successful comp plan implementation, and Dublin is now recognized as a model Plan First community in the state of Georgia.
All right, thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna, Mr. Gaddis, we're gonna get a photograph with you, our Mayor Protim, and Sherrie Evelyn, our city planner.
Absolutely.
Receiving the certificate on behalf of the city of Dublin. And just while they're getting this photo.
Don't you want to share in?
Congratulations.
Yeah, the, the. All right, thank you very much. The public should know that the city, as Mr. Gaddis said, the city of Dublin has benefited to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars in saved interest just off of our Jifa loan by receiving a lower interest rate, together with money that we've received through the CHIP program for housing revitalization. We've gotten a low-income tax credit project approved for additional housing to be built in Dublin. And the CDBG grant money that we get through the state and federal entities has helped paying for the West Mary Street renovation project and has done other projects throughout town over the last decade. So this is one of those times where, you know, you think about planning as, you know, just a lot of meetings, a lot of talking, a lot of documents, but what it really means is that when you've got a plan, then you're able to access so much more in terms of grant money from the state and federal partners. And this designation as a Plan First community basically is like a seal of approval that gets us access to a lot of low-interest programs and grant programs, which ultimately has been a massive benefit to the city of Dublin. So thank you, Mr. Gaddis, for coming today. Appreciate all the hard work of our staff in making sure that we qualified for this for a record fourth time in a row. Thank you very much.
At Bank of Dudley, we're your community, your bank. And with seven branches to serve you, there's a Bank of Dudley close by. And there's a familiar face close by. The same familiar faces that you've seen for many years. The same people that you've grown to trust, because that's what community banking is all about. Seven branches, local people, local decisions, local banking. That's the Bank of Dudley, serving our community since 1905.
So when I sat down for an interview, Mike asked me one question. He asked me, "What made me choose, why did I want to come to work here?" You know, I told him, "I was ready to learn."
Fred had a desire to be a mechanic and learn the transportation side or the logistics side of things. What he learned at OFTC has just taken his job and his performance to another level.
OFTC prepared me for working here. You know, it fit perfectly when I was going to school for it.
All right, so we'll now move to our regular agenda items. Our first agenda item is approval of our November 6, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Suck it.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs, a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two is approval of bills over $15,000. Those bills are in your packet. I believe every council member has had an opportunity to review those. Any questions for staff? If there are no questions for staff, do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three is purchases over $15,000. We have one purchase related to a storm drain replacement. Mr. Powell, if you can explain that project for us, please.
Yes, sir. A couple of years ago, we did one section of storm drain replacement along Cypress Drive. And now a further section of the line has deteriorated and needs to be replaced. And that's from, if you're looking on the map there, that's on the screen in the council chambers, letter C up to letter A, those three legs of line need to be replaced. And our, we solicited quotes from different providers that could do this service force. And TES, Total Earth Services LLC, was the low quote at $40,936. We do have some, the 2006 SPOST had a project listed for road, street, and drainage improvements. And that is actually a project that we could use some, spend some more money in. And so we recommend using '06 SPOST dollars to fund this project and replace this section of the line.
Okay, you've had an opportunity to discuss this at pre-council and hear this agenda item. Are there any questions for staff regarding this storm drain replacement? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to make this repair.
Suck it.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby, a second from Councilman Brown to approve the repair item. Any discussion on the motion? With no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If any are opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The repair invoice is approved, and we will move to item number four in the agenda. Item number four in the agenda is a report on the Lawrence County Board of Elections and Registration on the Certified Election Results from our November 4, 2025 city election. Now, this is not an actual certification of the results. This is a reading of the results into the minutes so that there will be a public record of the vote totals in the city of Dublin minutes. This is for any kind of historical or future reference, if anybody wants to go back and look at what vote totals were from prior elections. It's going to be in our minute book. The entire election results are going to be an attachment to the minutes for this meeting's minute, for this meeting's minutes. At this time, I'm going to just quickly read the final election results for those, if that's, unless you would like to do it, Mr. Daniels. All right, so far, city council at large, we had Tess Godfrey with 1,489 votes, Sarah Colby with 1,311 votes, and Brandon Chain, who is actually in the audience with us today. He's been coming to council meetings with 977 votes. Those are the three city council at-large members who were elected. The vote totals for the other candidates will appear in the minutes. For the Board of Education at-large seat, Jeff Davis received 1,336 votes over Regina McCray with 1,213 votes. For the Board of Education Super District 1, Kenny Walters with 787 votes unopposed. For Board of Education Super District 2, John Bill III with 1,009 votes unopposed. We had, and Homestead Exemption Act 239 was approved by 2,085 votes to 395 votes. A Homestead Exemption Act under 106 was approved, 1,745 votes in favor to 792 opposed. And the countywide results for East SPOST, this would be county votes plus city votes together. East SPOST was approved by 4,828 votes to 2,102 votes. No action for council is required. This report will be preserved in our minutes. We'll now move to item number five of the agenda, which is discussion and action on an ordinance to amend our zoning code related to RV parks. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance 2510, an ordinance by the mayor and city council of the city of Dublin, Georgia to amend the code of ordinances by amending Appendix A, which is our zoning code, to provide for a new section with comprehensive regulations for the safe and orderly development of recreational vehicle parks in the city of Dublin and for other lawful purposes. This ordinance has been before the council now a couple of times, and we've already had a public hearing on the ordinance, and the council received citizens' comments on that. Some of the highlights of this ordinance are that a RV development cannot be within 10,000 feet of the intersection at Bellevue Road, Veterans Boulevard, and Lancaster, which is kind of right there in the middle of town where Bubba's Tire is located, is the best way I know to describe that intersection, little five points, we'll call it. And so you can see on the map, if you're in the council chambers, there's a radius there that would be, that would, from which a RV park could not be located inside that circle. The park size must be at least five acres or greater. The density is seven camps, campsites per developable acre. There could be no permanent structures allowed on the, on the development. And no more than 50% of the sites could be long-term. And long-term is any stay that's longer than 45 days. And no stay can be longer than six months without a 30-day break from that same RV park. And then a manager must be on-site during business hours, and there must be an emergency contact for the facility available 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
All right, so some of the modifications, the, this proposed ordinance were made as a result of council comments at the prior meetings, in particular, the desire to make sure that any RV parks were not going to be adjacent to our neighborhoods and residential areas. And as you can see with this radius here, the RV parks would primarily be able to be located along the bypass areas. That would be about the only properties within the city of limits that would still qualify for having RV parks. And that's the appropriate place for an RV park if we're going to have them in the city. Of course, any application for an RV park would also have to be approved by planning and zoning because it's a conditional use. Do we have any comments on this and questions for staff? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Griggs with a second from Councilman Colby. Any discussion on the motion?
Did Councilman Benny Jones get clarity on this map?
Yeah, so we discussed this in pre-council, and Councilman Jones, did you have any further questions related to the, the area that was going to be restricted from RV parks?
No, I was really, I looked at.
Okay, so just for the public, if you couldn't hear, I said, he said that he did have an opportunity to review it and approves it. All right, any other questions at this time?
Nope.
All right, do we have, do we have a motion?
All in favor.
Okay, we need a roll call vote at this time.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Uh, Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Councilman Smith, this is a time for the roll call vote with a yes or a no.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
All right, ordinance passes on a six to zero vote.
Allen's Heating and Cooling is your licensed to manna equipment dealer. Trust Allen's Heating and Cooling to install and service your heating and cooling unit. Allen services all brands, and with the purchase of a new Amana, offers a lifetime compressor warranty. Call Sean Clark or any of his friendly staff at Allen's Heating and Cooling. If you're a manna dealer, Amana lasts and lasts and lasts.
Hey, this is Period Williamson's Baker, a proud supporter of Dublin Lawrence County Athletics since 1965. From donuts to cupcakes and cookies to a clear, we have everything to satisfy your sweet tooth. We even have treats for your dogs. So when Friday rolls around, don't forget to stop by and pick up some stuff for that late afternoon tailgate. So remember, go Raiders, go Crusaders, go Falcons, and go Irish. You can find us on Facebook, or you can stop by and see us at 1634 Veterans Boulevard. Give us a call at 478-272-3344.
We'll now move to item number six on the agenda, which is the first reading of an ordinance to rezone a parcel from R1 Single Family to P Professional. This is at 1521 Rice Avenue. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance zoning map amendment number 2517, an amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Dublin, Georgia, as previously amended for the purpose of rezoning .38 acres, more or less, of property located at parcel D10C169. The physical address is 1521 Rice Avenue, Dublin, Georgia, from R1 Single Family Residential to P Professional Zone. And the proposed use by the current tenants is a daycare facility. This, you know, throughout the last, I'd say, 15 to 20 years, Rice Avenue has transitioned from primarily a residential use to more commercial or professional use. And we, if you look at our zoning map, go online to our website and look at our zoning map, you'll see there's several places where it's kind of, it alternates as you go from house to house. This particular location, the request is that they'd be allowed to have a daycare facility there, which is not allowed in a single-family residential zone. And so the recommendation of staff is that it be zoned to P Professional to allow for this use. And as I'm sure the public knows, daycares, if you've got small children, you, there are several that have long waiting lists. So if we can encourage and have another daycare facility for our community, that would be a good thing.
All right, council will take no action on this item at this time. This is for the public to know that this has been proposed. There will be an opportunity for public comment at the public hearing that will be held on this matter on December 11, 2025, at our next city council meeting at 5:30 PM. At that time, we will have the second reading and public hearing, and we'll receive public comment on the proposed rezoning of 1521 Rice Avenue. At this time, we'll move to item number seven on our agenda, which is a first reading of an ordinance to establish administrative variances. Again, this is a first reading of the ordinance. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2518, an ordinance by the mayor and city council of the city of Dublin, Georgia to add a new section to establish administrative variances for the city of Dublin, to provide for severability, to repeal all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, provide an adoption and effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Throughout, we've gotten some feedback from the community, especially developers and our, our local developers in the community, about oftentimes, government can be slow, I know you've never heard that before, can be slow to, to achieve things and do things. Some of it's, you know, required on us by state and federal law, but some of it's our own doing. And here, we've found an opportunity to kind of streamline a process that, that should happen faster. And there are several times when the minimum setback required for a development or side-yard requirement or the total lot size for a yard just doesn't make sense based on the surrounding developments and the area that the, the location is. A lot of that has happened because Dublin, as you know, was first incorporated in 1812, but we have, and so we had neighborhoods that grew up over time, and lots were determined and set and platted out. And then at some point in time later, the city council adopted a zoning code, which adopted all these different requirements. And some of the existing developments that were already in place did not meet those requirements. And so as a house has been torn down or burned down or whatever, going back and trying to build a house in exactly the same spot where it was before, you have to go through this long 45-day process or longer to get approval from a zoning board. And so this will allow for staff to review an application and in certain circumstances, allow for a variance that makes sense with the surrounding developments, with some limitations. But this is one way where staff is looking to streamline that process and make it easier for these developments that just make sense to occur.
Okay, so this was the first reading of the ordinance. And I think what's important to note is that, number one, is that we want the public to know that these things are happening before we actually vote on them and that you have an opportunity to comment. That's why we always do a first reading and then have a public hearing before we vote on it. And number two is that this ordinance is a direct result of having listened to our in-town developers who are trying to develop properties within the city of Dublin. We're trying to encourage those developers and make it easier for them to develop properties within the city of Dublin. So I want everybody out there to know that if you have suggestions or you've encountered roadblocks from the city of Dublin for any type of housing development, please let us know, and we will continue to try to work with you to streamline the process to make it easier for you to develop within the city limits of Dublin. So that was the first reading of this ordinance, and we will now move to our, well, let me do say this, that the second reading and public hearing will be on December 11 at this council chambers at 5:30 PM, December 11 at 5:30 PM. All right, we'll now move to our next item on the agenda, which is item number eight, which is an ordinance to revise zoning changes regarding area yard height requirements in R5 developments. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance 2519, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin, Georgia to amend the zoning code regarding development standards for R5 requirements for the city of Dublin, to amend the area yard and height requirements for greater clarity, to provide for severability, to repeal all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to provide an adoption and effective date, and for other lawful purposes. This ordinance is, in a lot of ways, a kind of a cleanup ordinance. It amends the zoning code in a couple of different ways. One is, we had previously, the council had reduced the minimum square footage requirements for housing developments to 550 square feet, but we found that the R5 development had a specific provision that said that those had to be a minimum of 1,000 square feet. And that's for heated space in the home. And so this will remove that limitation so that the default of 550 will apply for R5 developments, which makes sense. R5, another number's large, but it sounds, and it sounds like it's multifamily, but it's a single-family development. It's just allows for a greater density, so more houses within a smaller acreage can be developed as one development. The, so this will allow for smaller homes on those, those type of developments. It also cleans up another discrepancy, which was that the density that was listed in the R5 zone for one acre was less than what was allowed on an eight-acre development, which kind of didn't make sense in a lot of ways. So this cleans that up to allow for at least six units per acre regardless of the size. And then the other cleanup is that in our, if you've ever looked at our zoning code, and the developers in the room know what I'm talking about, but there's a chart and a table that's in there that has all the side-yard setbacks and minimum lot size requirements in there. And there were some holes in there, and so this ordinance will fill in those holes and also removes a reference to a zoning classification that does not exist in our code. So just to clean up on that regard.
Okay, so this was the first reading of the ordinance to revise these zoning provisions. The second reading and the public hearing on this will be on December 11, 2025, at 5:30. At that time, we'll receive public comment. Would just like to say that I think everybody who, everybody knows the problem that not just Dublin, Lawrence County, but our whole country is facing. but our whole country is facing in terms of the price of housing. Um, I know that young people who are just starting out in the world, sometimes they've got a lot of student loan debt. They're looking at the prospects of trying to buy a house, would like to buy a house and start building equity in it. Start, you know, accumulating some capital that can be, um, helpful for them in, in their lifetime. And they look at the price of housing and it's just so expensive that it's very difficult to be able to afford that. And so you end up with a lot of rentals. And we know as a community from experience that, um, you know, rentals is part of the mix and there will always be rental properties, but it's really your, your owner occupied housing that is the foundation of your community. People who are taking care of property because they own it and it's theirs. And that's what we really want to encourage as a town. Now, we've got all these headwinds against that and those headwinds are things, some things we can't control. You know, inflation and, uh, cost of building materials and the, and the cost of labor. But when we look at the things that contribute to housing costs, one of the largest things that developers tell us is regulations and how difficult it is to get your permits and actually build the house. And that's something that we do have control over as a city. So what we are trying to do through this measure and the one that we just talked about, and also with the plan first designation, which allows for some low interest loans and chip programs and CEBG grants, is we're trying to lower the cost of housing, um, and make it more possible for developers to build new housing within the city limits. And that's good for our community if we can get more of the people of Dublin owning their homes. So I just want the public to know that we're doing what we can to address the issue. Some of the things seem a little bit obscure, like, you know, what are the acreage requirements for an R5? But this is in response to what developers are telling us are roadblocks. So again, if you're a developer, you think that you'd be like, you would like to build something in the city of Dublin, let us know how we can reduce those roadblocks because we, we're here, we want to help, we want more housing, we want more homeowners in the city of Dublin. So with that said, we will have a public hearing on this and those other items on December 11th at 5:30.
Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, green and growing, invested in the communities we serve. For consumer loans, commercial loans, mortgage loans, contact us at 272-7775 or log on to CBS-LC.com. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, located on Hillcrest Parkway and downtown in the Henry Building. Member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
Get a great deal on making the most of every property. The Kubota Commercial Landscape lineup is built to do more. From the RTVX utility vehicle to the Z700 mower to the SVL track loader. When your reputation is on the line, you need equipment that doesn't let you down. Right now, bring home select Kubota equipment for zero down, 1.99% APR for up to 48 months.
Products you can count on, a name you can trust, that's Midstate Tractor and Equipment.
Let's move to item number nine, which is a resolution to establish a schedule of fees, Mr. Powell.
This is resolution 2556, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council, adopting and establishing a schedule of fees for the city of Dublin, to provide for authority to establish other fees, to provide authority for enforcement and implementation and set an effective date. Uh, this is, uh, a few meetings back, the council made adjustments in our, um, ordinances all throughout the code of ordinances. And thank you to, um, Annie Shepherd and Jacob Poole for your, um, help in going through all these ordinances. But, uh, made it where those are going to be take, the actual specific fee is taken out of the ordinance and put in one concentrated, uh, exhibit to show all of our fees in one place for ease of access. Um, and so the council has authorized itself to, um, set these by resolution. And so you have an exhibit in your materials that shows all of the fees that we charge, uh, for the various services and things that we provide, um, including, um, gas rates, water rates, um, garbage and sanitation rates, permit fees and all of that kind of thing. We also have added in, um, now that we're starting up our parks, uh, program and doing several renovation projects have been completed, um, have fees related to recreation in our parks, so.
All right, um, I know that we spent a good bit of time on this at our pre-council meeting and, uh, there are probably some amendments that we will make, uh, related to waivers and, and authority of department heads or city manager on certain fees in, in particular circumstances. But at this time, this will, uh, establish the base of all the fees. And I know that our city staff wants to have that in writing so that they can refer to it until we can, uh, as we continue to possibly tweak some of the particulars of this. Do we have any, uh, questions for staff or motion?
Make a motion to approve the fees.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Brown.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Colby and discussion on the motion. All right, if there's no discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we will now move to item number 10 on the agenda, which is discussion and action on resolution 2558, TEFRA, TEFRA approval. Uh, this is something new for our community. Uh, I don't, at least as far as I can recall, I don't believe that we have, uh, had to do this before. But at this time, we are going to, um, close our city council meeting and hold a public hearing, uh, to, uh, approve the issuance of, or at least to receive comment regarding a bond that is being issued out of the state of Wisconsin to help acquire a local cancer center. And what we, I'm going to go through the public hearing and we have with us an attorney who represents the bar and there, and that attorney is going to explain to us exactly what this is. We're going to receive public comment on that. If anybody has any interest in making comments, we're going to receive those comments and then we'll close the public hearing. But at this time, uh, we are going to close our city council meeting and we are going to open the public hearing regarding the TEFRA bond issuance. So good afternoon to all the members of the public who are here and wish to, uh, make any comments related to the issuance of the bond. I'm serving as hearing officer on behalf of the city of Dublin and the Dublin City Council for this TEFRA bond hearing. Today we have with us Brandon K. Wood of the law firm Nixon Peabody. Mr. K. Wood is counsel or attorney for the Anoma Cancer Collective Foundation. I'd ask Mr. K. Wood to come forward at this time. Uh, Mr. K. Wood is going to give us the information related to this bond. After he gives us this information, we're going to provide members of the public with an opportunity to express their views on the proposed issuance of the bonds. And then, um, if we have any questions, then Mr. K. Wood will be able to answer those questions as much as possible. Mr. K. Wood, thank you for coming here. And, uh, do you need me to, uh, state the notice requirements that have, that have been met? Is that something that you would like me to do? Okay, all right, well, please come forward and explain to the public the purpose of this bond hearing.
Good afternoon, my name is, uh, Brandon K. Wood, as stated by, uh, the mayor. I am a tax attorney with the law firm Nixon Peabody, representing the Anoma Cancer Collective Foundation, who is the borrower for a bond issuance by the Public Finance Authority of Wisconsin. And following, uh, my remarks here, I'm going to invite Dan Moore, who is here with Anoma, to speak about the project as well and some of the details there. As I mentioned, the bonds will be issued by the Public Finance Authority and will ultimately be loaned to Anoma, the borrower, to acquire a number of existing oncology centers, uh, throughout the country. Because one of these, uh, existing centers is located here in Dublin, the authority is required under federal tax law to obtain what is called a host approval, uh, from the city following a public hearing. This public hearing, for the issuance of its proposed tax exempt bonds. The federal tax law requires that the jurisdiction in which the project is located provide approval of the issuance, so that the bonds can be issued as tax exempt without the approval from each of the jurisdictions where the project is located. The bonds cannot be issued tax exempt. Again, the bonds will be issued by the authority and will not constitute a debt, obligation or liability directly or indirectly, contingently or otherwise of the city or the state of Georgia. I'm available during this hearing to discuss the federal tax requirements in more detail if there are any questions and I'll invite Dan up to talk about the project in more detail.
All right, Mr. Moore, thank you for, uh, coming here today to discuss the, uh, the implications of this bond for the cancer center.
Very good, thank you for your time and then congratulations on your award as a city. Uh, converting to a nonprofit ensures sustainability. Uh, the existing center Cure Point has treated an average of 4,000 treatments a year, keeping folks close to home, allowing people to continue to work during cancer treatment. While 27% of cancer centers closed in the nation in the last seven years, Cure Point will continue to thrive. Nonprofit status will provide access to new sources of money to the center, similar to your 24 million in grants, that the cancer center now has access to cancer specific grants and even philanthropic sources. And we are hopeful that these sources will help the center offer even more services, including research and benign treatment services. These are currently not possible under the current business structure of the facility. And it's always been the case, every patient, regardless of financial ability, will be treated. Anoma Cancer Collective has already received commitments from outside the city and state in excess of $1 million for cancer services, uh, philanthropic donations. Anoma has sites in Alabama, Florida, Texas and Washington in addition to this site and have received their TEFRA approvals. No liability, no debt whatsoever for the city, just more and sustainable services. We appreciate your support in our TEFRA approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morse, appreciate you, uh, coming here and providing those comments. So again, this is for the Cure Point Cancer Center in Dublin to convert to a nonprofit status. Part of that is receiving these bonds, that it would be tax exempt. And my understanding is that that will allow this, uh, cancer center to continue providing services for Dublin and Lawrence County and our surrounding area. At this time, if any members of the public have any questions or would like to make any comments, this is the time to do that, including any council members who would like to ask any questions or make comments.
I have a question, can you explain, uh, what TEFRA approval stands for?
Yes, the, uh, TEFRA approval is in reference to, uh, a, the name of the Congressional Act in 1982 that, uh, requires this, uh, under the tax code. So, um, as part of, uh, Congress then, they, uh, thought that it would be beneficial for 501(c)(3)'s that sought to finance, uh, projects via tax exempt bonds to receive approval, not only from the issuer of the bonds themselves, but also from the, uh, locations that the, uh, projects will be used to, to give the public the opportunity to, uh, to comment on it, uh, you know, because it is someone coming in from outside the community, it's important to know what's happening there. But the name TEFRA is the acronym from the 1982 Act.
One more quick question, and when it says tax exempt financing, what taxes are being, um, are they exempted from?
Uh, federal taxes.
Okay.
So it's, uh, in, in the, if the bond issuance goes forward, you'd be able to, uh, the bonds would be sold publicly. And then they would be, uh, available for purchase from the public, um, after, after they've closed. So if you can think about it, like if you have a, a general obligation bond of the city and those bonds are existing, you could go on E-Trade and search for them and, uh, this, this would be in a similar manner.
Will this have any effect on property tax, um, on, on any of these local properties?
I am not certain.
Not certain. Location of the property is 2406 Bellevue Avenue. That's the only physical location.
Yeah, I believe it'd be minimal.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question, Senator.
Yes, uh, would you like to, if you would like to come forward and, uh, just state your name and like, is within all our public comments, there's a three minute, uh, time limitation on it.
It's such a short question and I do have a.
Sure, if you, yeah, if you'd like to ask it from there, that's fine.
To the gentleman from Cure Point, could you elaborate exactly, um, my name is John Glenn White. Would you elaborate exactly what cancers that you all, um, um, addressed, please? I saw on the website just then, there was breast cancer, lung cancer, um, but there's so many different types of cancers that are coming out, prostate cancer, you know, colon cancer. Do you all address all the specific cancers that, that are happening in these different times, please?
Yeah, if you'd like to come forward to answer that to the extent you can.
Yes, uh, thank you for the question. We currently treat all cancer types. Uh, we, uh, treat with radiation oncology, uh, which is very specific, which is about 6% of the population will need radiation therapy. So it's all cancer types that need radiation therapy. Uh, we do, do not offer medical oncology at that facility, just the radiation oncology.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, do we have any other comments from the public? Again, we're at a public hearing here, so anyone who wants to make a comment, this is your opportunity. Any other questions from council members or any of the public? All right, um, and I will just note for the record that, um, notice of this hearing was published, uh, on November 13th, 2025 in the Dublin Courier-Herald. And that, uh, notice provided, um, that any interested person, uh, would be available to come here and make a comment at today's hearing. Also, I want to thank our, uh, staff attorney, Mr. Jacob Poole for, and Annie for working, uh, with the other attorneys to, uh, make sure that this hearing was done in compliance with, uh, federal law. Uh, at this time, if there are no further comments, we will close the hearing. And, um, do I need authorization from council to sign the?
I think I've got to read this resolution.
Okay, so at this time, uh, the public hearing is closed and we will read a resolution, uh, related to the TEFRA approval. Mr. Powell.
This is resolution 2558, a resolution of the city council of the city of Dublin, Georgia, approving solely for the limited purposes of section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code, the issuance by the Public Finance Authority of its Public Finance Authority Revenue Bonds in one or more series of tax exempt qualified 501(c)(3) bonds pursuant to a plan of finance in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $190 million for the purpose of financing the project herein described. And just for clarity, I, I believe that of that 190 million, 16 million is expected to be used for the project that's in Dublin.
Mr. K. Wood.
No more than 16 million.
The ominous shaking of the chair. Yes, it's a not to exceed 16 million, so the amount of the, uh, that is, uh, going to Dublin is, uh, 16 million of that 190 million.
Okay, so do we have a motion related to the res- resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve the resolution from Councilman Griggs, so we have a second.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Godfrey, any discussion on the resolution? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If any are opposed, nay, the ayes have it. I will be happy to sign the resolution at the end of the meeting. Thank you guys for coming, uh, appreciate. It's always important that we have as many medical services available within Dublin as possible so that our citizens don't have to travel to larger communities to receive these services, especially when it's something as sensitive as cancer treatment with radiation. So appreciate you guys going through this process. Thank you.
It's truck month here at Dublin Chevy GMC and we have all the deals for you. With our best selection ever of Tahos and Yukons, come pick one out to take home for the holidays. With great deals on both 25 and 26 models, including savings of up to $10,000 off MSRP, now's the time to come pick out the HD or LD of your choice. And hey, if you already have your new truck and you're just looking for something to have fun in, we have savings up to $8,000 off MSRP on new Corvettes, only at Dublin Chevy GMC.
Hi, we're Dion and Gary Lanton, we're the new owners of Luann's Biscuits and Burgers. We want to invite you guys to come out to our newly renovated dining room. We're open 5:15 AM through 10:45 AM, Monday through Saturday for breakfast. We now offer delivery and pickup online at our website, luannbiscuits.com. You can go through our menu, order anything that we have on the menu right there, have it delivered to you where you are. We're at 1010 Telfair Street, so come on out, the coffee's hot, best in Lawrence County, the biscuits are fresh, the doors are open. We invite you to come back to Luann's.
All right, we'll now move to item number 11 on the agenda, which is discussion and, and action on a resolution to authorize a contract with Dublin Construction Company for Springdale Park, Mr. Powell.
Um, real excited to, to have this item on the agenda. The council has made great strides in our city parks. Um, we have, uh, assisted, uh, the school system with improving Gary Johnson Park. Uh, we have made improvements at Railroad Park. Uh, we've made, created a Unity Point, um, which is, um, a little corner, a little park, park there, uh, in our community. The O'Conne Gym Project has been completed and we've made improvements down at, uh, the Roscoe Borough Park area. And, um, if you haven't been by, uh, Pritchett Park is, uh, completed. We do have a few punchless items that the contractors are working on there. Um, as well as Hillburn Park is coming along nicely in the next week or so. You should see, they've installed the lighting over there and I think that's going to make a really big difference, uh, in that park. And so we're already moving on. Um, we've been planning and working with our, um, engineers and landscape architects on the Springdale Park project. Um, and so that's coming soon and this is the first step towards that and, um, And this resolution is Resolution Number 2560, a resolution by the Mayor and Council of the City of Dublin to approve the award of a contract to Dublin Construction Company for the Springdale Park Improvement Project to authorize the mayor to execute and deliver the same, to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. We did advertise for firms to submit qualifications to do this work on a construction management at risk agreement. And Dublin Construction, after the staff evaluation committee reviewed all applicants and interviewed those firms, has recommended that Dublin Construction be awarded the contract. And we wanted to get them in early so they could help us with some practical thoughts and opinions and they've already provided some to the staff about how we can implement this project and make it the most cost effective and get the most bang for our buck. So I'm always glad to recommend to award to a local contracting firm and thank you for y'all's submission and proposal. And I'll say we've got some folks here from Dublin Construction as well.
This is Jimmy Williams and Chris Morse. Thank you guys for coming. And, and I know we're going to have a motion and, you know, on the resolution, but if there's anything that either of you would like to say about the project, you're welcome to come forward. You don't have to, but if you'd like to say anything or do council members have any questions for, for Dublin Construction Company?
When are we starting? Okay, thanks.
I will say this, that the city has over the last, at least since I've been here the last four years, looked at lots of different ways to try to deliver these projects as cost effectively and as quickly as possible. And there, there are some things that just take time, you know, we, just because you're a city government, you have to follow certain regulations about how you award contracts and how they get bid out. But what we've really tried to move towards is bringing on the contractors as early as possible in the project development because what an engineer or a designer may put on paper often has real world roadblocks.
Push.
Yeah, where, you know, they know what it's like to actually have to put, you know, a bulldozer or a backhoe on a piece of property and move a piece of dirt or wreck a piece of equipment. And, and so they can, if they, if they have involvement early on, they can spot those things that will save us money. So one of the things that we're trying to do with our contracting process now is bring in our contractors as early as possible to help with the design work, to finalize the design work. So we start with, and we started Springdale this way, with concept plans. And the concept plans are beautiful. The concept plans, you know, are like ink drawings and, you know, they, they've got computer generated people walking through a park and, you know, it's, it looks beautiful. But we've got to take that vision and actually put it on the ground and that's where our contractors can provide us really good advice about how we can do that cost effectively. And I will say that Dublin Construction Company's proposal on this contract was very competitive and we appreciate you guys wanting to do this job. And I can say just on behalf of myself and I'm sure City Council, we're looking forward to working with you on it.
Absolutely.
At this time, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All right. So everybody wants to second that motion? I'll say we have a motion from Councilman Brown, a second from Councilman Godfrey. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any are opposed, nay. The ayes have it and we look forward to getting this project underway. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will move to citizens' comments. If there are any citizens who would like to make a comment, now is your opportunity. As always, it's three minutes. Ms. Wright, are you making comments? Okay.
I have props.
Is there anyone else who's going to make a comment? Yeah, Ms. Calvin, if you'd like to come forward while she's getting ready.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kite, members of council and city manager, Josh Powell. As Executive Director of the Land Bank, Dublin Lawrence Land Bank, I'd like to thank you all for your support. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you for your presence, your participation at our, and to some of the city staff that attended, for your participation and attendance at our annual meeting earlier this week. Our mayor's comments were extraordinary. They were innovative and just your very presence there sent a strong message, not just to me, but to our board, that our community is on the rise. I mean, we're going to revitalize, we're going to redevelop and remain responsive stewards, stewards of our neighborhoods. And that does remain a priority of Dublin and thank you for that. Also, because of your leadership and the resources you provide, along with the county, the land bank is positioned to transform blighted properties into opportunities for housing, economic development, and stronger and safe neighborhoods. So I am deeply grateful to your trust, for your trust, your trust, and your collaboration. Thank you for continuing to stand with us as we move forward in this very important work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Calvin. Ms. Wright, you, you ready? All right.
Good afternoon. My name is Jocelyn Denise Janon Wright. I live at the corner of Art Street and Church Street and I am a citizen of Dublin. I've heard of the big beautiful bills. What about our whole city? We work, play, and mingle together, but it would be nice to see city officials around town other than Quover. There are at least four of you that graduated from Dublin City Schools. The millage rate increases on personal property taxes has been going on for at least 10 years. This deficit has been hidden not only here in this chamber, but in several chambers, boardrooms in Lawrence County. I would like to see more city officials at football, basketball, soccer, tennis, and baseball games. Hats off to a job well done on Madison Street, but it's a dead downtown. No one can afford the restaurants whether we be rich or poor. I was asked by one of my neighbors to ask if there could be a flat fee for furniture that's being thrown around in Southside. It's ridiculous. North Church Street by Sturts Park is ridiculous. Is there not a city motor pool to keep our trucks running? There are some of us on council who own property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
This Alken primer is the go-to for all your exterior wood projects. Its oil-based formula penetrates for maximum adhesion, even on weathered surfaces. It seals uniformly and also provides excellent stain blocking, making it ideal for tan and rich woods such as cedar and redwood. If you want a long-lasting premium finish on your exterior wood projects, start with Fresh Start Deck and Siding Primer.
Quality products and installation since 1985. That's four seasons.
Since we were founded, the Houston Clinic has sought to provide the most advanced orthopedic services available to men, women, and children of all ages and all walks of life. And today, Dr. Gay and Dr. Ridgster continue the tradition of service in the Lawrence County communities. From our sports teams through every facet of this community, the Houston Clinic is not only proud to serve you, we deem it an honor. The Houston Clinic, 100 Medical Drive Suite 400 in Dublin.
All right. Any other citizens' comments? Anyone else like to make a comment? All right. With no more citizens' comments, any comments from our city attorney's office? Chris? All right, thank you. Mr. Daniels?
I'm fine.
Okay. Mr. Brown, Councilman Brown.
Just want to thank you everybody for being here. Tell everybody Happy Thanksgiving. We've got a lot to be thankful for here in our community and we're thankful for everybody that gives back and look forward to a prosperous 2026. Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Godfrey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out today. Also, thank Mr. Gaddis from the DCA for his presentation, even though he has left the room. And I appreciate the employees who worked on that Plan First, comprehensive plan. And I would be remiss if I did not mention Tara Bradshaw because she did help us out a lot. And thank everybody else that are still here and working with us on that. Also, congratulations to Dublin Construction. I am on the Parks Committee and I look forward to working with you all. So thank you for that. And Chris Smith asked me to make mention of the free dinners that Paula's will be giving away on Thanksgiving Day at Paula's starting at 11 a.m. and at the Meat Market on Telfair Street starting at noon. So thank y'all and Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Yep, go ahead.
And I forgot to say thank y'all for voting for me, all those that voted for me. Oh my God, how can I forget? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Godfrey. Councilman Colby.
We're glad to have you back to us. So I am just so incredibly grateful for each and every one of our employees, our staff, our citizens who are continuing to invest in our community. We saw today that we are reducing red tape. One of the biggest questions and concerns that I have from citizens is how do we get some of the red tape removed so we can move things a little bit quick, more quickly? So I'm happy to see that we're making strides towards that so that we can increase housing renovations, updates, and new construction. We all understand that housing is an issue here in Dublin. I'm also super excited about Hillburn and Pritchett Park completions and the start of the Springdale Park project. If you have not been to those parks, Hillburn and Pritchett, please go out, bring a child with you because they will love those playgrounds. We are super excited about the direction of our parks here in the city. And I also want to give a big thanks to Mayor Kite, our city manager, Josh Powell, and Blake Daniels. They always go above and beyond with explanations. I always have lots and lots of questions and they are always very happy to explain. And I really appreciate Mayor Kite giving extensive explanations during our council meetings as well. We could come in here and quickly go through an agenda and say yes or no and you would have no clue what we're saying yes or no to, but I think it's very important that our community is informed and that we're making wise decisions. So thank you again.
Appreciate that. Councilman Griggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming and echo what everybody else has already had to say and have a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, great. Councilman Jones, are you online? Would you like to make any comments? Or Councilman Smith, if you'd like to make any comments?
Uh, no comment.
Okay. It's a little bit hard.
I didn't want to do that. Happy safe Thanksgiving.
All right. They just said happy safe Thanksgiving to all the people of Dublin. Mr. Powell, any comments today?
Yes, please. I want to thank Sharon Evelyn, our city planner, for the application for the Plan First designation. Thank you for your hard work on that. I think that came about very quickly after you were hired, so thank you. And thank you for, to Matthew Bradshaw and all the folks in our engineering department. A lot of those projects that were, you know, we put on a plan, they help effect and get completed, so thank you for that. And we're glad to be able to report that we do all those things. I want to remind everybody that City Hall will be closed tomorrow briefly, just in the morning from 10:45 until 1 p.m. We are having our annual employee Thanksgiving lunch together down at the Emory Thomas Auditorium, so everybody will be down there for that. The Downtown Jingle and Mingle is coming up soon, believe it or not, December the 5th, that's Friday, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. So please be sure you come downtown and enjoy the beautiful downtown for that. We also will have the Christmas Parade on December the 6th. Lineup is going to be at 4:30 and the parade itself is going to start at 6. And just make note, we're only going to have one council meeting in December, that's the plan, at least, on December the 11th. And so that, that meeting will be at 5:30 p.m. I want to say too that we were very fortunate and blessed to all city employees and all the departments gathered together to donate canned goods and food items to Widow's Oil. And we were able to provide food for about 350 families through that effort. So we just gave that earlier this week and it's really humbling and a blessing to be able to provide that for our community. So just wanted to let the council know about that. And that's all I have.
All right, great. Thank you. You know, one of the things that comes up a good bit is what is the financial oversight provided by this council regarding the public's money? It's your money, it's not our money. So what kind of oversight do we provide for how your money is spent? And I want to thank Mr. Powell and Mr. Daniels for discussing that at length with us at pre-council about items that we do see on our packets every month and maybe items that don't show up, such as regular payroll checks or internal transfers and making sure that they, they made sure that we understand what those transactions are and how we can access those transactions at any time that we need to. They have been tremendous sources of information, reliable information to council members who have any questions about that. And also, just so the public knows, in our packet, we receive pages of information regarding every check that goes out to every third-party vendor issued by the City of Dublin. And one of the things that we do is we get this packet several days before the meeting and we have an opportunity to review every penny that goes outside the City of Dublin. If it's over $15,000, we have to approve it in open meeting like we did with a storm drain over on Cordelia or Cypress today because that was over $15,000. We had to announce it to the public, explain what it was about. If it's under $15,000 or if it's related to gas money, because those checks are much larger, but they also have to be pretty quickly issued because of buying of gas for our gas department. But all of those are, are here on this list that we receive every two weeks. So this is part of our duty as fiduciaries for you, the taxpayer, to monitor how money is spent at the City of Dublin. Now, we rely on Mr. Daniels and Mr. Powell to collect this information, to provide it to us. In addition to that, Mr. Powell puts together each month a monthly city manager's report. And these are available online. If you haven't had an opportunity, if you're ever interested of anything that's going on in the city, you can go online and pull down the city manager's monthly report. And what the monthly report does, it has from each department, everything that that department is doing for the City of Dublin. So for example, if you have, if you're interested in how many water, sewer, and garbage bills go out, how many customers are billed? There's 7,516 customers. You can see the amount of money that is collected from those bills. And then in the accounting tab, you can see how this month's income is different from last month's income and different from last year's income. So occasionally, we'll take a look at this and say, wait, why are we off so much this month compared to last month? And we'll ask Mr. Daniels and he'll say, oh, we had this issue this month and this is what's going on. So all of this is available, not just to council members, but to the public as well. And, yes, we, we really enjoy having all this here. In addition to all the financial information that is available to the public through these reports, we also have, every department from the city sends in the information about what they're doing. For example, we have a list of all the places, all the businesses in Dublin that have had fire inspections. So we've got the list of probably 40 different companies that were inspected for, for fire compliance. We also have the. inspected for, for fire compliance. We also have the number of, for example, fire response calls. In October, there were 71 fire response calls. And it breaks it down, how many structure fires we had, like, we had seven structure fires in October. All that information is in here. When you, if you're ever able to take even just 20 minutes, pull up that report online, look through it, you'll see how much the City of Dublin is doing. And we're doing it this year. Now, we haven't had an opportunity to actually formally vote on our tax rollback yet. We're waiting on the school system to certify their rate to us. But whenever they do, we'll have a call meeting, and we will, uh, for the fourth year in a row, at least, roll back.
We voted on ours.
Oh, we voted on ours already? So the, the bill will be approved?
We're going to vote on theirs.
Okay. So we have, so we are rolling back the taxes. Or, you know, when I started, it was six and a half, maybe, and now we're at under four and a half as our millage rate. Uh, we did a tax cut in one year. We went even beyond the rollback rate. But we've at least done the rollback rate this entire time. So we're providing all of these services, um, and we're still cutting taxes at the same time. And a lot of the credit for that goes to our city staff, who's going above and beyond, um, for all the employees of the City of Dublin who work so hard, the grant money that we're getting, the way that we're able to manage our money through our finance department, and the excellent oversight provided by our city council. So I feel like we're working well as a team now, but one of the major things is that we have to be transparent about that, and the public has to be able to verify that. And that's why we want to make sure that all this documentation is available to you. If you don't see it online and you want a copy of it, just do an open records request, and we'll definitely respond to that and make sure that you get the information you're looking for. If there are no other comments, thank you for coming. This meeting is adjourned.